I know the game now.
You know Sheila, she wouldn't text me back for two weeks. I was on probation.
She was on first. Like you all texts. I don't talk to you on telephone.
Okay, like the town council meeting for February 28th, 2017. Orders as if you please stand for the invitation by Father Mike Magino of 16.
Oh yeah. Church. Mike, I didn't even see him.
And please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty and heavenly father, as we gather together on this eve of for those of us as Christians, will begin that great spiritual journey that ends up with our celebration of that most transformative effect of your son's life, death and resurrection that has a deep effect in all of our lives. We ask for you to send forth your spirit upon the members of this council that they may be guided by that spirit to go on the right path on those endeavors and continue on that way so that that all that we may come to do may always be guided by your blessings and benefits, especially to those who live and work in our most beloved community. And we ask that these in all things may always be directed to the glory of your name through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Well, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I don't know if I can say this or not, but you know, Father Magino is a celebrity? On TV? I can say that? I one day I'm looking on ghost stories.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And there you who there you you did Exorcist.
That's it.
Oh, great. Alright, anyways, okay. Plus he's my parish priest. Okay, Father.
Span.
Here.
Minchick. Yuzlak.
Here.
Darren. Pettit.
Here.
Lamarcus.
Here.
And Hardaway.
Here.
President, I forgot to let you know that Councilman Minchuck called me about five o'clock. He had an emergency at work. He got pulled back to work and to let you know he wasn't going to be able to leave.
Okay, we have five present. Thank you. Petitions, communications, acknowledgments and remonstrations, Mr. Spiers?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, one thing I have is that this past Friday, one of our, one of Jean's employees with thirty-one and a half years of service was able to walk out of here and start a new life. We'd like to congratulate Linda Burns for thirty-one and a half years of loyal service to the town of Maryville, and I'm sure that she will be surely missed. Absolutely. Consent agenda, council payable register voucher approval for February 28th, 2017 along with approval for town council minutes from February the fourteenth, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Span that will approve the accounts payable register along with the town council minutes, meeting minutes from February the fourteenth. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Public works, Councilman Minchuck is not here. Does anyone have anything under public works? Council affairs, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
No report at this time.
Personnel policy, employee benefits. Is there any discussion at this time? Public safety, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes, I would like to thank our administrator, Bruce Spiers, for the cleanup of the glass that was all over Seventy-Eighth and Chase. It was done immediately and the people there had called me and I want to thank you for a quick response on that. And Rosenbaum Park, we have tire ruts. We have different boys, possibly young boys going through there with their cars. It's very muddy right now, but according to Jan, we will wait till spring to try to give that a good cleanup. Right, Jan? And I also have a lot of complaints on garbage cans that are not being moved after the garbage is picked up. Sometimes they sit there for a week. So today I called Vicky, the code enforcement officer, and she checked on a couple and that was done immediately. But we do have an ordinance on that and I don't think a lot of people realize that. So we're watching it now very closely.
Thank you. That that's always a touchy subject margin, all areas, because if you ride through after the next day after garbage and a lot of subdivisions, people still have garbage cans out and Vicky has been.
Watching it.
Told.
Yeah.
To go out and make sure that these people, you know, you can put your garbage can out after four o'clock the day before, but by the end of the day, like mine is on Thursday, by the end of the day on Thursday, then you should take it back in and it shouldn't be back, it shouldn't be out there Monday, Friday morning. So.
Well, my pickup is on Monday and sometimes they are still sitting there till the following week. So we have notified some people in the area that there is an ordinance and we're going to be giving them a warning.
I think that when the newsletter will be coming out probably within the next couple of weeks. I think that's one of the items that we'll put in the newsletter this time.
Definitely.
There's some kind of like nuisance ordinances that we need to make people aware of, you know, such as keeping the grass cut, garbage cans and those types of things. So that, you know, just like we do with the two inch snowfall, now we have to remind people about their garbage cans and we're getting ready to go into the summer months and their grass and all those other things that come with grass. So I and I appreciate the council. If you guys could, you run into problems, let Vicky know.
Sure.
You know, right now she's shorthanded, but she she don't mind getting out there, rolling up her sleeves and making sure that the integrity of the town is maintained.
What I what I have a problem with is sometime people walk their dogs and don't pick up after them.
If you see that, then you gotta.
And they're new and I'm talking to them and they they look at me like.
Yeah, I know.
You know, I like, you pick it up. I call somebody.
Well, they have to carry a little baggie with them.
They should carry a bag with them.
That's what they do.
Yeah, but it's your dog. You pick it up. I'm not gonna pick up your dog.
Exactly. Yeah, I know. It's it's all about educating the community.
They're new, they're new, but they need to know the rules, you know?
Well, it's kind of like anything else, Mr. Span. If you tell me the rules, then I can decide whether I'm gonna play the game or not. And if not, then, you know, I moved into the neighborhood, maybe I should get that U-Haul and get out.
That'd be a good idea, because I don't want stepping your dog's stuff.
Right. And then the other thing that over there by you, the going into Bell Oaks, that somebody hit that wall?
Right.
Have you got calls on that?
You know what? I talked to the chief. He came over. The kid, his kid hit it.
Yeah.
Actually, I don't know how he did it because right before the wall, it's like three feet.
Right, yeah.
I think he fell asleep or something.
Yep, yeah.
But he's gonna put the wall back up.
Okay, alright, yeah, because I, you know, I've gotten phone calls, so I'm quite sure you've got some too.
I have had three people.
Well, that's okay.
They know, they know that wall's going back up.
Yeah, well, that's important. They just need to.
Yeah, it's it's good privacy.
Right. They just need to be assured that it's gonna go back up.
Oh, it's going back up.
Okay, thanks, Councilman.
Good.
Park to recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
Can I get to Jan?
Just a small report. The Maryville Parks Department has partnered with Purdue University. We're offering nutrition nutrition classes for seniors and we got a great response for that. Currently, we have about fourteen seniors signed up for the class. It starts in March and goes through May. And the park department is currently working on its summer events, the concerts. I put a call through to Mike Deppi. I have not heard back from him as of yet, and we're working on our schedule for movies in the park as well.
He'll he'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. President, to to Jan and Bruce, what deadline did we put on that RFP for the feasibility study?
The it's published on March eighth and fifteenth and they're due April's, proposals are due in April seventeenth.
April seventeenth, okay.
Yet due at the office of the Parks Department.
Okay. One question for you. I had a conversation with somebody talking about senior services, something. What do you got going on for seniors at Prusen anything?
A lot, mostly seniors. We have exercise classes, yoga classes. We're starting the nutrition class. We have a group of seniors going to Four Winds Casino in March. I've got a trip for seniors going to North Carolina, the Biltmore. So we got quite a big senior base that we serve at the Prusen Center.
Okay, well, my reason for asking is because it was with the executive director for SCLC, the senior busing, and she was wanting to probably get in touch with you or you get in touch with her because she's willing to provide transportation for seniors to the Prusen Center.
Really?
Yeah.
Because a group of seniors that participate at the Maryville High School.
Right.
Were trying to get to the Prusen Center. So that would be good. I'll be able to.
Give her a call. Her name is Margot Sabato.
Is that North Carolina trip? Is that a casino trip?
No, it's a Biltmore State trip.
Okay, what is that scenic?
Um, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, so give her a call, because I had a conversation with her a couple of weeks ago and she is looking to do something to help you get seniors to the Prusen Center.
That's great.
My cousin is.
Environmental affairs, Councilwoman Barrett. Matt, no report at this time. Thank you. Elections and public relations, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
No report.
Economic development, Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President, I wanted to kind of fold in a couple of items. We talked about in the workshop about having another workshop next Tuesday night.
Right.
Sheila, do we have a planning commission workshop for next Tuesday? There is, there is items. Because I think what I'd like to do on our economic development, we had a pending tax abatement proposal and I had asked them to give us back information. I'd like to call a committee meeting Tuesday, Bruce, for, but I'm not sure what time you want to have your workshop.
Ours is five thirty.
Five thirty. I mean, I won't need much time. Let's do it immediately after the council workshop and before the planning commission, Bruce, for that spec building.
We'll take forty-five minutes and give you fifteen, huh?
Right, that's fine, yeah. Alright.
Could we do our meeting first because you're gonna have two representatives of the chamber?
Yeah, is that alright?
So let's make our our meeting at five forty-five.
Alright, and economic development will be five thirty.
Right.
Alright.
That's good.
And let them know, Bruce, and then distribute that information that the petitioner gave us along with the SB one form to the committee.
Yes.
That new information I asked for.
Okay.
Alright, that'll be at five thirty next Tuesday, Mr. President.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Utility liaison, Councilman Span.
No report.
Abandoned properties, one quick question, Mr. Bushimi. Still looking for the tax certificates for those six lots on Broadway?
For eighteen, twenty-four.
Eighteen, twelve, twelve eighteen, twenty-four.
Twelve eighteen and twenty-four, yes. You know what? I expected that we would have received them by now. We're gonna follow up tomorrow with, directly with Board of Commissioners' office and with their assistance.
Okay, because we are, as I indicated you, I was advised by him that they were on the agenda. Right. Approved. Wednesday last week.
That would have been Wednesday the fifteenth.
Right.
Weeks ago.
Right. Okay, well, we just need to get that because I want to get those appraisals as quick as we possibly can so that we can put some stakes in the ground and try to sell those properties as quick as we possibly can. Alright, general orders. We have no first reading ordinances, no second reading ordinances, no resolutions, BGA actions. The first one is the first petitioner is Harvey Alabad, the owner's North Trust, North Star Trust Company, special exception approval, used car dealership, fifty-nine twenty-four Broadway. It's a C two community commercial, case number Z five E three dash zero two one seven. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Adam Sworden, Louis Cappas on behalf of the petitioner. I don't know if you want to start with the staff report.
Yep, would you staff report, please?
P petitioner is requesting special exception approval for a used car lot located at fifty-nine twenty-four Broadway in the C two community commercial zoning district. The existing used car lot was BGA approved on July twenty-second, twenty fifteen, and town council approved on July twenty-third and February ninth, twenty sixteen. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. The new petitioner, Harvey Alabad, will adhere to all the conditions of the previous petitioner. The used car business will not perform any repairs, motors or transmission work, tire change, bodywork or any other major repairs to the vehicles on site other than cleaning and detailing vehicles for sale. Petitioner will continue to seek surrounding businesses for other repair work that may be needed. Petitioner will have a combination of outside and inside display not to exceed twenty used vehicles. Hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, nine a.m. to seven p.m. and closed on Sunday. The used car business will employ approximately five to six individuals and the name of the business will remain Maryville Auto Sales. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Any questions? Councilwoman Lamarcus?
I don't have any questions. It's just we had issues with the previous tenant there and we're not looking to repeat them. They they had asked for, I think originally, twelve cars on the lot and they exceeded it or was it? And they just kept exceeding it and they parked on neighboring businesses claiming either they weren't their cars or they were being repaired. Again, we're just not looking to repeat that.
Same place. They just changed owners.
So I welcome your business into town. Absolutely. Just please follow the rules.
There is an existing car lot there right now, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, you're just changing the name.
We're changing the legal ownership.
The legal ownership.
Yeah, the current owner has a family issue with somebody overseas and they have to return home. So that's prompted this and I think it's probably been exacerbated here recently with some of the restrictions on.
So it's been sold to the new owner?
It's subject to action favorably tonight and the actual property owner that has a lease with the current owner, which term survives this, has already approved assignment contingent on.
Okay.
This special exception being granted, which was a condition to the prior owner moving in and opening and establishing business.
So it's underneath contingency until tonight, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Alright.
So what's gonna happen when the new, when the old owner returns?
Well, the old owner is not going to be returning.
Okay, she's going for.
Yeah, there's gonna be a complete change of legal entity behind Maryville Auto Sales. My client, Harvey, has seventeen years of experience in both Illinois and Missouri, and so he's looking to bring that success that he's had here to Maryville and actually assisting the current owner of that business because otherwise she'd be forced to shut down and the property probably revert back to being vacant. And he's very much aware of the history, obviously from my involvement on the backend, but the current owner understands the issues the town has had. But again, is happy with the current model, knows that that will work for him and for retention possibly of the employees that are there currently so that he can pick up where she left off. There is one item with the state as far as licensing. That license has to be surrendered by the current owner and then he would apply for that license. So there may be a week or two where there's hardly any activity on the site and that's because of the state's requirements to come up and physically confirm that the location hasn't changed and all the parameters that were in place for the last license are gonna be renewed under a new license under new ownership.
Will there be a problem with the current owner with the license?
There will not be. They've already approved essentially this action, subject to the fact that the special exception could continue.
So that's all been discussed.
Because the term, yes, the original term of the lease was for three years and I believe we're approximately one and a half years into that lease. So and and obviously the intention is is to exercise some provisions in there to continue the business.
How many cars are usually on that lot?
Well, right now they've been maximizing out that twenty.
They're gonna be capped off. They're gonna be capped at twenty.
Okay.
Maximum.
So, and I think the turnover there, some of the BGA spoke at the last meeting that they haven't seen any excess of twenty cars there. And actually, before the meeting, they were checking, given the application, the history of the property. But they they move a significant number of high-quality vehicles out of that location. So they've been very successful there.
Oh, good. You know, I missed your name. What is your name?
It's attorney, Adam Sworden, Louis Cappas.
Spelled the last name.
S W O R D E N.
Okay, alright, sorry.
Anything else from the council?
Like to make a motion?
I will second that motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, seconded by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that will approve case number Z five E three dash zero two one seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number Z six E four dash zero two one seven, Parat Patel, petitioner, Parat Patel owner, special exception approval, Smoothie King franchise, eighty-one eighty Mississippi Street, C three highway commercial. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hold on, sir. Staff report.
P petitioner is requesting special exception approval for Smoothie King franchise to be located at eighty-one eighty Mississippi Street in the C three highway commercial zoning district. The proposed Smoothie King franchise will be located in the north unit of the eighty-one eighty Mississippi Street Jimmy John's restaurant. The smoothie store will be fifty-four feet, six inches by sixteen feet, five inches, and have approximately two seats. The Smoothie King concept is basically a carryout concept with no drive-through. The smoothie bar will feature a variety of fruit-based protein and supplemental smoothies. The store will also feature grab snacks that include protein bars, granola bars and trail mixes. The parking area has sixty, sixty parking spaces and uses approximately twenty of those parking spaces during peak business hours. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, eight a.m. to nine p.m. and Sunday, eleven a.m. to six p.m. and will employ approximately two to three individuals. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that will approve case number Z six E four dash zero two one seven. Is there any discussion? Any questions for the petitioner?
Uh, wait a second though. On your map, Mr. Patel, you show a drive-through. Does this say it is not have a drive-through?
Yeah, the Jimmy John's has an existing drive-through.
So you're just using their site plan?
There should be an updated site plan that has the Smoothie King plotted next to the Jimmy John's. The Jimmy John's is only sixteen hundred square feet. The Smoothie King's gonna be like nine ninety-six. The whole building is four eight, eight, seven, five.
Okay, oh, okay, it's their window. Okay, I see. Okay.
How many people are employed by Smoothie King?
It's in the actual store at the time, it's probably gonna be two or three, but we're probably gonna have about six to eight employees total because it's gonna be like a part-time job. It's mostly gonna be high schoolers, people.
Sure. Okay.
Any other discuss, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Case number Z seven U V three dash zero two one seven, Hytham Rafi, there's the petitioner, the owner is Hytham Rafi, the variance of use report to allow a residential home to be used as office space, ninety-seven seventeen Colorado Street, A one agriculture. Staff report, please.
Aye, good evening.
P petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval in the A one agriculture zoning district to allow a single-family resident to be used as office space. The single-family residential home is located at ninety-seven seventeen Colorado Street and is now vacant. The home has been rented several times, tenants damaged property and then leave. Also, since the property has been vacant, the home has been vandalized. Petitioner would like home to be used as a professional or business office space. Dental, medical and banking offices will be excluded from leasing the office space. There is enough parking on premises to support the use of an office space. The office space will not affect adjacent properties in the area. Tenants will not live in the office space. Utilities and access roles are available. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
And we're entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span that we approve case number Z seven U V three dash zero two one seven. Any discussion?
Yes, what is that office space for? What is that going to be? An office for what?
Well, he's been renting for a tenant and the tenants, most of the time, they mess it up or tear it up. So it's gonna be like small office for maybe an insurance or any like small.
He doesn't have a rent.
I met with Dr. Rafi, Margie and Sheila, and I met with Dr. Rafi, and this has been kind of an ongoing problem north of the Islamic Center on Colorado. And I told Dr. Rafi, so long as it wasn't medical or dental, which requires a certain number of parking spaces as long.
Sure.
As well as banking, insurance, architecture, you know, even a travel, you know, any type of accountant, any type of light office like that, you know, I don't have a problem with that out there.
So actually, there's no final decision on what it will be at this time?
Not yet.
They're just looking, they're looking for rent. They're gonna.
Update the space.
They're gonna update it and try to get somebody.
Every time, you know, they have a tenant, they spend so much money.
Yes.
Moderning, so he decided, you know what, it's not worth it anymore. So let me figure out something else.
Right.
So maybe from nine to five, no sleep and, you know, one to two employees.
Your Dr. Rafi son-in-law, correct?
Yeah.
And he sent me, he sent me an email earlier.
Okay.
Okay. You would approve, Councilman, you would approve the use and that they would find a tenant that conforms with the use that you.
Very good. You are married to the lawyer?
I'm a lawyer.
Right.
I'm an oral surgeon.
You're a D R oral surgeon and she's the attorney, correct? Okay, I know her. Very good. Now I'm straight. Thank you.
She knows everybody. Now I know where David gets it from.
Oh, no.
Is there any other, any other discussion? Did anybody remonstrate against this, I guess?
No, no one. The gentleman that came to the meeting wanted to make sure, he misunderstood what it was. He wanted to make sure that they was not going to tear down the house and build a office.
Oh, okay.
He didn't want that because he likes the farm country.
He was an adjoining property owner, Sheila?
Yes.
On ninety-seventh or on?
He didn't say, he left his name on the list, but he was just, he he didn't want a new building with parking in his backyard.
Okay, he's probably off of ninety-seventh then, yeah.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, case number Z eight E five dash zero two one seven, Batiste Hayward, petitioner, the owner is Wanda Belitch. The request is special exception approval, full-service dining and restaurant, seventy-six hundred, seventy-six oh two Broadway, zoning the C three highway commercial. Good evening.
Good evening.
Staff report, please.
P petitioner is requesting special exception approval for a dining and restaurant located at seventy-six hundred, seventy-six oh two Broadway in the C three highway commercial zoning district. The property was operated as a family restaurant, Delta Restaurant previously. Proposed restaurant will be a family dine-in restaurant. The parking site will support the number of seats in the restaurant. There will be a total of ninety-four seats in the restaurant and sixty-one parking spaces available in the business center. Hours of operation are Sunday through Wednesday, six a.m. to three p.m. and Thursday through Saturday, six a.m. to nine p.m. The restaurant will employ approximately seven to eight individuals. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Okay, all three of you are involved with this or?
I want to know the specialty.
Yeah, what's going on?
Well, first thing we gotta do is somebody give me a.
I'll make a motion since it's in my ward and we'll discuss.
Thank you. Motion by.
That why you looking over here for?
Yes.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that will approve case number Z eight E five dash zero two one seven. Any discussion?
Are you using the entire existing Delta space?
Yes, sir.
Okay, both sides. Hey, yeah, I kind of had that banquet larger area off to the south, I guess it would be.
Yeah.
So you're taking up all the space that Delta had?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, now initially.
Okay, alright, now initially, when Sheila, uh, called me about this, you were only gonna do breakfast, only you've expanded the hours?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
So, Wanda Belitch?
That's my mother.
That's your mother?
Yes.
Okay, she is the owner?
Yes.
And you are going to run the restaurant?
No, no, I'm just kinda lookout, she lives in Virginia.
Oh, oh.
He's gonna run the restaurant.
Oh, I see.
Thought I'd be here representing her.
I understand now, okay.
So what's gonna be the specialty?
We'll get you a menu.
Yeah.
We'll get you a menu.
I'm, uh...
'Cause I eat that sometimes.
As I'm sure all the councilor are concerned about, uh, vacant buildings on Broadway are top priority.
Yes.
Uh, we just converted Broadway Cafe, you moving in is extremely, uh, exciting, uh, we'd like to see more space with, with the rest of the buildings, I know, what is it, Cupcake? Uh, what's the name of the place?
What's the name of the Cupcake place?
Yeah, and I have a, a tenant for the middle section.
Right.
Seamstress. And, uh, she was in South Lake Mall or Westfield Mall.
Right.
The hours were, so she wants to move in there too, so we'll have the whole building ready.
You will have the whole building ready?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, that was my concern, okay.